Oh, everybody's good.
I'd like to throw this meeting of the Monticello City Council to order. Please rise and join me in reciting the Pledge of Allegiance. And remain standing as Rodney Burris leads us in prayer. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, that liberty and justice for all.
So, thank you, Father, for again bringing us together. We ask you to be with us as we make budget decisions today. We talk about stuff to help us to recognize where things need to be spent and where things don't need to be. We pray, praise, and glorify your holy name. Amen?
Roll call, please, Jim.
Mr. Reed.
Here.
Mr. Waddam.
Here.
Mr. Carey.
Here.
Ms. Lively.
Here.
Mr. Piercy.
Here.
Mr. Brock.
Here.
Mr. Broderick.
Here.
Mr. Kuhn.
Here.
Mr. Burris.
Here.
Ms. Yoon. Here. We have a call.
Thank you. How about participation, in-person participation? This is an opportunity for the public to provide public comment to the presiding officer. Those wishing to speak are required to sign in prior to commencement of the meeting and must address counsel from the seat and table provided. The public comments must comply with ordinance 2014-02 and be limited to five minutes or less. Anyone, Rob? Thank you. Remote participation. This is an opportunity for the public to provide public comment to the presiding officer. The public comments must comply with ordinance 2014-02 and be limited to five minutes or less. At this time, members of the public are able to attend public meetings by web conference and to submit public comment by email, voicemail, or through web conference. Anyone tonight, Maura? Thank you. Moving on to the consent agenda. Approval of documents and action items is listed. Claims report, claims dated October 29, 2024 through November 12, 2024. Meeting minutes, City Council meeting minutes, October 28, 2024. City Council closed meeting minutes, October 28, 2024. Treasurers' report, February 29, 2024, August 31, 2024, and September 30, 2024. Permit report, October 2024. Fire report, October 2024. Police report, October 2024. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented? Is there a second? Any comments or questions before we vote? Of city staff? Hearing or seeing, then may I have a roll call, please?
Mr. Reed.
Yes.
Mr. Waddam.
Yes.
Mr. Carey.
Yes.
Ms. Lively.
Yes.
Mr. Pierce.
Yes.
Mr. Brock.
Yes.
Mr. Broderick.
Yes.
Mr. Kuhn.
Yes.
Mr. Burris.
Yes.
And Ms. Yoon. Yes, motion passes.
Thank you. Moving on to the mayor's report. Candidates running in the consolidated general election can file petitions November 12 through November 18. Upcoming events, the Monticello Railway Museum's Polar Express event starts this Friday and runs the next four weekends in downtown. Downtown Monticello shops are hosting an ugly sweater shopping night from 5:00 to 8:00 p.m. on Thursday, November 21. The Villas of Hollybrook is holding a Christmas market on Saturday, November 23. And tickets for the Monticello Main Street fundraiser, the Reds of Christmas, are on sale. This event will be held Friday, November 29, in downtown Monticello. Additionally, Monticello High School will be presenting the 50th reunion of the Madrigal Dinner Concert this Sunday in the Seaver Center at 3 o'clock p.m. It's free, open to the public. And they're anticipating more than 120 alums are people coming back to sing, plus the this year's Madrigal Group. I think you'll enjoy it if you'd like to attend. It should take, the person that's in charge said an hour, but knowing vocalist, it'll be longer than an hour slightly. Okay, so that's for your information. Moving on to new business. Ordinance 2024-51 and ordinance approving an encroachment permit at 219 West Washington, City of Monticello, Piatt County, Illinois. Jim?
Thanks, Mayor and counsel. Yes, so just a quick overview of what this is. Encroachment permits required in our code of ordinances for anything that's going to be put in the right of way. So I'll get right into the specifics. The City of Monticello received an application from Bucks Pond Properties. Mr. James Hellmuth is here to discuss any questions you may have for him for a permit to allow the installation of a patio cover, a patio cover structure on the city, on city property at 219 West Washington to cover the outdoor seating area. The structure will be anchored to the concrete, but not the building. If approved, the structure would be constructed in general accordance with the plans submitted. I believe you all have seen those. And I provided a vicinity map as well so you could kind of tell that patio that we're speaking of is really patio dedicated to that property and upstairs apartments that they also own. So Sections 94.075 through 94.079 of the city code allow issuance of a revocable encroachment permit for certain privately owned structures on city property after City Council has reviewed the request and passed an ordinance allowing such structure, which will then amend the list of allowable encroachments we have within the city in the section there of 94.079. Because 219 West Street Properties contributing structure to the Courthouse Square National Historic District, the Historic Preservation Committee must review and provide input to prevent installation modifications that are complimentary, not detrimental to the historic district. On November 5, 2024, 4:00 p.m., the Historic Preservation Committee did meet and held a special meeting to discuss the project as submitted. The HPC requested a small change to some diagonal cross members, and the applicant agreed and will omit them from the drawings going forward. The city staff reviewed the application. The Historic Preservation Commission has recommended the structure is satisfactory and in prescribed form as outlined within Sections 94.075 through 94.079 of the code ordinances, City of Monticello. It's recommended that the City Council discuss and approve, deny ordinance 2024-51 as presented today.
Thank you. Any questions of Jim? Or Mr. Hellmuth? He's here, thanks for coming.
HPC was completely okay with this?
Well, they had one small change. So there were some cross members that lined up with the vertical members of the railing. They thought it would look better if those weren't there.
Was there a vote on this?
Yes. It was unanimous.
Unanimous, okay.
Yeah.
Okay. Any other questions, comments? Is there a motion to approve ordinance 2024-51 and ordinance approving an encroachment permit at 219 West Washington, City of Monticello, Piatt County, Illinois? Motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Once more chance. Any comments, questions? Hearing or seeing, then may I have a roll call, please?
Mr. Reed.
Yes.
Mr. Waddam.
Yes.
Mr. Carey.
Yes.
Ms. Lively.
Yes.
Mr. Piercy.
Yes.
Mr. Brock.
Yes.
Mr. Broderick.
Yes.
Mr. Kuhn.
Yes.
Mr. Burris.
Yes.
And Ms. Yoon.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Moving on to Resolution 2024-52, Truth and Taxation Law Resolution. Terry?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. State statutes establish procedures and requirements for determining the amounts of money necessary to be raised for a property tax levy by a municipality. In accordance with the truth and taxation law, the City Council must approve the tax levy at least 20 days prior to adoption of the final levy. If the estimated property tax levy is less than 105% of the prior year levy, the city does not have to advertise its intent and hold public hearing on the levy. City administration has estimated the FY 2025 property tax levy to be $923,631, which is approximately 4.9% over the previous year's levy. The FY 2025 tax levy ordinance will be placed on the December 9, 2024. City Council Agenda for Approval, a draft of that proposed ordinance is attached. Your review. It is recommended City Council discuss established the tax levy amount and approve Resolution 2024-52. We have, as long as I can remember, have always done 4.9%. That does not mean your property tax goes up 4.9%. If we had $1 million in property tax last year, we asked for 4.9% more. That's it, 1,001,49,000. And that's spread out over the existing homes and all the new homes that are not currently on the tax rolls for 2024, but will be for 2025. So your property tax does not go up 4.9%. That rate does not go up.
Any comments, questions?
So why does the city always put 4.9%? Why couldn't it be, I mean, why didn't it be less than that?
It could be less than that, but our legal counsel, and Maura knows this like the back of her hair, always advised, go 4.9%. You're leaving money on the table if you don't.
It's not like we don't spend every nickel of it.
That's true.
I mean, 49,000, I don't know if that'll pay. It's just, you know, a $5 million budget. But you do grab, the biggest reason you grab the homes that will be on the tax roll in next year.
Anyone else? Is there a motion to approve Resolution 2024-52, Truth and Taxation Law Resolution?
To move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any other comments or questions? Hearing or seeing, any, may I have a roll call?
Mr. Reed.
Yes.
Mr. Waddam.
Yes.
Mr. Carey.
Yes.
Ms. Lively.
Yes.
Mr. Piercy.
Yes.
Mr. Brock.
Yes.
Mr. Broderick.
Yes.
Mr. Kuhn.
No.
Mr. Burris.
Yes.
And Ms. Yoon.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. We're moving on to fiscal year 2025 budget discussion only. Terry?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So tonight, I've asked all the department heads to join us tonight. With us is Jim Gaborzak, Planning and Development Director, Carlos McClellan, Parks and Recreation Director, Baker, Public Works Director, Matt Caff, Human Resources, and Finance Director, Nancy Frazee, Woody Billing Clerk, and I believe Callie Jo McFarland, Community and Economic Development Director, is joining remotely. She's at a conference out in Omaha right now. You there, Callie?
She was telephonic. She said she was going to walk in as soon as she could.
She's somewhere between here and Omaha. And also joining us remotely, I believe, is Mindy Condes, the Aquatics Programming Director. You there, Mindy?
I am here.
Okay, thank you. So, and also, I apologize for leaving these guys out, but Police Chief Rob Bros and Fire Chief John Rubkey. So without their input, without their assistance, budget would be a very difficult task for me to do. So I do appreciate all of your input. I appreciate, we did, Maura and I did meet with the committees. A lot of great discussion, a lot of great conversation. I thank you for spending time out of your schedules to meet with Maura and I. It is greatly appreciated. I think it makes it a little bit clearer as we get into tonight. I share a lot of information with those committees. And I, we were pretty adamant about the numbers. We were waiting on numbers still, like Freedom Park and Overhain Park. Where are we going to be in the Burke Park? Rolling over those figures. So as I indicated, I do have those numbers now. So those, I think we were pretty adamant that's a working document and change from what you, we discussed in detail to what you'll see tonight. If you don't mind, I'd like to point out from the items in the consent agenda that you approved tonight and the treasurer's report. There's two line items in there that are pretty significant. Line item one on page one is general fund balance.
Of which report? Which report? By September? Treasurer's report? Thank you.
So you'll see on the first line, the general fund balance is 16.5 million. When we met, we had information a few months ago, and it was about almost 11 million. Since then, we have found the treasurer was not including the 4.75 million in the bonds in his data. So that is why it's not the 11 million. It's actually 16.5 million. And then the second number, if you go down to underneath motor fuel tax, you go to working cash. That is almost $1 million. It's $980,000. That is an account that is restricted and takes council action to utilize that money. And it was set aside 2008, I think, Maura indicated, as the really, really, really rainy day fund. A million bucks, I think it was, what'd you say? It was set aside then at 400,000? So we haven't touched it, and it's just interest, obviously. So you add those two together, and it's, you know, we have approximately, with council approval, an action 17.5 million in reserves. Does that make, anybody have any questions on that? Okay. I'm going to, this year, with the projects and waiting on some engineers' cost estimates and whatnot, I would like to, if you don't mind, I'd like to just pass over general fund and do that after we go through water, sewer, motor fuel tax, F, business district. So if you don't mind, if you, we can jump to page 13. That will begin Water Works. There's really not, and if you don't mind, I've highlighted a few lines, line items in here that I definitely want to bring to your attention and discuss. So I'm not going to go line by line. We did that at the committees. But if you don't mind, if you would allow me to just hit, you know, some of the more major things, if you will. Nothing on page 13 jumps out as far as what was budgeted in '24, what we're looking at in '25. And please understand, when Maura and I go through this, and Maura, and thank you enough for all your help with the budget yet again. When we go through this, we look at historical data back to 2015. We look at what was approved by council. We look at the final numbers for the fiscal year. So the historical data and trends and the needs of each department kind of go into each one of these departmental budgets. So on page 13, there was nothing that really jumped out to me as a huge increase or decrease. And please don't hesitate to ask. That's why these folks are here. They're a huge resource for me and you. If I can't answer it, they can. Page 14. Man, I wish we'd print these smaller. Line 858. Let's see, we went from 8,000. Maintenance and vehicles, equipment, went from 8,000 to 12,000. That is for water plants, generator work. It's an old generator. It's hard to get parts for it. So that is to make some upgrades. I think the motherboard, some of the inserts of that generator, bring it up to, you know, 2,000-ish. That's why you'll see that increase on line 858. I don't have anything else that really jumps out on page 14 unless you all have a question.
876, residential refuse and recycling. What exactly is that? What does that pay for?
So when we went to a one garbage hauler system, we collect the money. Okay, it goes out with your water bill. We collect the money. You'll see it as a revenue. And then we pay, it's an expenditure. We pay Republic Services. And that's paid out of water and... Good question. Anything else on page 14? Page 15, line 900. This is capital improvements for the water department. We would need to clean the, clean the north tower and this ground storage tank that's inside the fence of the water treatment plant. So that increased from 4,500 to 14,000. Line 905, the elevated storage tank rehab at Next Park. When we, when we did that project, there was, they did a lot of work at this water tower here by Next Park, and we signed a maintenance agreement that goes out several years, and it's $18,000 for this year. So they did the work on it, and we have a maintenance program that they come and check everything out, make sure that, you know, nothing, you know, if there's a pinhole in that thing, if they see anything, then it's brought to our attention. So that's why that's not 62,000, it's 18,000. So all in all, the line 916, Water Works is actually a little bit down in expenditures from last year. Any questions on 15 or Water Works in general? Line 16. I would say line 954. This is sanitation fund, maintenance, equipment, and vehicles. Went from 10,000 to 40,000. Our VAC truck needs some necessary repairs to it. That VAC truck goes out way too often with...
Most days.
Most days. That VAC truck is an instrumental part in just sewer work. But it's also literally how we excavate in a lot of situations. They will literally go hydroexcavate earth to get to water main break, whatever it is. It's an instrumental part to the sewer and water. So it needs some, a little TLC. All of these, I failed to mention at the Water Works, but I will here at sanitation. All salaries in all the departments reflect a 3...
You said 3.
No, I didn't get it in the note.
Okay. 3.
Get out of this. A 5% minus 2% pay increase. I got out of it. So that's reflected on the salaries for all full-time employees. Any questions on page 16? Okay. Page 17, still under sanitation, line 978. Lab equipment. Matt Utley and Nick and Jake are at that plant every day, and they would like, need some new lab equipment for the daily tests, monthly tests, and annual tests that is required by the IEPA. Line 983, SCADA upgrade. The SCADA system is kind of the brains, you know, of the computer system that helps the wastewater treatment plant operator run the plant. So the SCADA system provides him instrumental data on a flow of this and chemicals that need to be fed because they're low. It really reads the whole plant and assists with the wastewater treatment plant operator and his daily activities. Brett, is that...
It is, yeah. It is, for lack of a better term, an automation to the plant. It's what helps us automate the plant where it runs pumps and different features, treatment features of it independently of somebody like going in, which is internal. And this will allow us, we don't currently have the lead to do anything off-site. So when, if we have a storm event or something like that, our operators cannot look at, look and make sure that something's going on with the plant, you know, right or wrong or whatever. They have to physically go to the plant. So this will give us the opportunity also to, if we have a storm event, a power outage or something, they'll work some on their phone right away, then me, any of the, any of the other under operators, that something's going wrong there. You can pull something up, you can restart a pump, you can restart something from their phone. You don't have to physically go there and see it because you can, if, you know, with a power outage, you can have like a failure of communication between an old antiquated like auto dialer or something like that to where you have a problem there. So this helps keep compliance if we have something, like a storm event that causes us to go, you know, down with the power or something.
Thank you.
It provides a lot.
Wasn't this available when we constructed the plant? And we didn't, we just didn't take, take the option?
Oh.
It's been several years, I know, right?
I, I don't know. I think it was available, but we cut certain things out.
In order to make, I believe at that time, in order to make certain monetary things work with that plant, we had to cut out this or that. And I think this function was kind of one that was cut out. And it's, it's been enough years now. We have to do a little bit more of a major upgrade to it.
Right.
Then maybe if we had done it initially.
I think it's, I think it's necessary, but...
I mean, it's just a technology thing. It's just those systems that we initially installed and that was done, they're just moving to new systems.
I got you.
It's like any other form of tech.
Oh, I think it's great. I have no problem with it. I just...
It makes sense to keep everything in immediate balance instead of having a negative flow, if you want to say.
Yeah.
And having someone have to be there and do that. And if you guys can fix it. And having someone have to be there and do that, and if you guys can fix it offsite and.
Yeah, and we currently have that option on our water plant, it's really nice.
Yeah.
See something, they can start pumping if they need to, if it happened to be half hour delay or something like that, if they need to, I mean, it's, it's really, it's a pretty integral part of
Beneficial.
Those two, especially those two integral parts for infrastructure.
Yeah. I agree.
Thank you, Brett. So everything said and done with sanitation on line ten twenty, they're they're in the black. Seventy-six thousand dollars. Anything else on sanitation? Okay, motor fuel tax. A lot of the same numbers as far as revenue, I will point out. Line ten seventy-four, interest, we've been doing really well with interest. We've actually, so it's increased to fifty thousand. Through August of this year, we are, interest was forty-eight thousand dollars, so as you'll, those that have been through this budgeting often, we, you'll hear it over and over and over, we're pretty conservative on the revenue, so I think fifty thousand dollars is still, should be expected for twenty-five. Line ten seventy-eight, oil and chip program, we'd like to do a few more streets next year, so that's increased by fifty thousand to a hundred and twenty-five thousand. Ten, line ten eighty-five, the Route Forty-seven Bridge Project. We have not started that demo access as of yet. You recall, can't do, it's time, seasonal sensitive, if you will, with bats and mud puppies and mussels, so won't be done in one calendar year, one fiscal year, so we just project a million dollars and hopefully we get that started. That sounds like a broken record.
Really?
Yeah. So that's, that's motor fuel tax, you'll see on that treasurer's report. We have motor fuel tax reserves of four point six million, so we've always said we try to stay above, stay at least four million in, in reserves. So we're doing pretty well there on motor fuel tax, any questions on that? Okay. Page nineteen, kind of just get to the TIF district information. Line eleven fourteen, we anticipate a twenty percent increase. That's everything going on in that tax district, most of it is Kirby stuff. So that is twenty, twenty percent increase. Line eleven thirty, the water tower bond payment, that will stay on the books through twenty twenty-nine, so that's going to be expiring here in the not-so-distant future. Line eleven thirty-four, the infrastructure improvements of a million dollars this year. That was for the through our no roadway, that's done, so nothing is, is represented obviously in twenty twenty-five. And eleven thirty, line eleven thirty-seven is the Burke Freedom Park debt service of a hundred and seventy thousand, that debt service comes out of three accounts, TIF District, Business District, and General Fund. So you'll see a hundred and seventy thousand dollars on there, or some figure through, it'll be paid off in twenty thirty. Any questions on TIF? Just FYI, the TIF reserves is about one point five million in September treasurer's report. So this would be in the red, fifty-eight thousand and change.
Subway lot's going to be done this next year.
Subway lot?
I see, I see money there, so I'm gonna assume.
Observation, Mayor Stoner.
Is this the year?
One, that's a good observation, a line eleven thirty-three, subway parking lot, a hundred and seventy thousand.
Thank you.
I can't believe I missed that.
I, people ask me, that's the only reason I am.
I know, I know. Business district, we're anticipating expecting five hundred thousand in revenues instead of five hundred and fifty thousand. The Burke, line eleven eighty-six, Burke Freedom Park Bond Expenditure, seven hundred thousand, we did not spend that money this year. It will be spent next year, seven hundred thousand dollars. And then the debt service, like I mentioned earlier, a hundred and seventy thousand dollars, again, from Business District, much like TIF, that'll be paid off in twenty thirty. And then we would like to get a down, line eleven eighty-eight, downtown wireless project, trying to improve wireless connectivity, it's good downtown. So you'll see fifty thousand dollars and get some wireless downtown. Is Callie, you joining us yet?
She's probably eating steak, she's in home.
Carrie, line eleven eighty-five, we just decided to not pursue that. I'm not telling you needs pursued, I'm just saying.
Yeah.
It didn't show.
That's a good question, so in the subway parking lot project this year, we will install conduit
In anticipation.
Put an EV charging station in the future.
Okay, thank you.
No, it's a good question. Anything else?
Better district?
Okay. So start off the General Fund. The line four, property tax, that represents that four point nine percent increase and two hundred and forty-six thousand dollars, that was part of that seven hundred and fifty thousand dollar bond non-refundum that we did to pay for, to help pay for grant in Buchanan. So that two hundred and forty-six thousand remained on the property tax, if you recall. Number, line seven, income tax. See a pretty significant increase in that, I, we looked through, through September of this year. We were at income tax of seven hundred and seventy-nine thousand. So we feel pretty comfortable with increasing that to nine hundred thousand. Line eleven, the corporate personal property replacement tax. We've projected one point five million, the state estimates their twenty twenty-five, which if you recall, goes July twenty twenty-four to June twenty twenty-five. So it's somewhat difficult when theirs, we're, we're dealing with six months in ours and six months in theirs. They estimate one point eight million. So we're kind of coming in at one point five million. Try to be on the safe side. That's really the only significance I saw in the tax revenue section. In miscellaneous revenue, line thirty-five, interest, again, we increased that from twenty thousand to forty thousand. It was sixty-four thousand through September, so again, pretty conservative on that interest. Line forty-nine, you'll see a revenue of sixty thousand five hundred. Fire Department was successful in obtaining a grant. So when we get to capital improvements, you'll see a sixty thousand five hundred as part of a capital improvement project expenditure down on the capital improvement projects. So Chief Repke's gonna hopefully get, get a bondable project set up to, to spend that money. It's been allocated, we, we will receive it in twenty twenty-five? That's all I have on page one, unless somebody has any questions? Okay. Administration expenditures, again, departments all show, reflect a three percent increase in salaries. Line eighty-two, you'll see an increase on Livingston Center Maintenance, six thou, from six thousand to thirty thousand. That is to replace all the windows, to make them a lot more efficient here in, at the Livingston Center. That's all I had on page two. Page three, line one eleven, tourism. We always contribute to the tourism, which is, I think, under the umbrella of the Chamber of Commerce. It's usually, you know, last year was thirty thousand. This year we increased it to forty thousand, they are pursuing a matching grant, so that would be the, our fifty percent, if you will, their fifty percent of that grant, if they were to get it. Line one thirty-two, under equip, equipment replacement, we would like to get a new truck for what we use for construction, stakeout, surveying. It's, it's a big box bed truck that we've got a rollout on it so we can get hubs and last and survey equipment out of the truck and, and go out in the field and use it. So you'll see that on thirty-five thousand for twenty twenty-five. Total, line one forty-four, total administration expenditures almost the same as twenty twenty-four. Questions on page three? Page four, police department. Line one eighty-eight, payroll taxes pension. That reflects another two hundred and fifty thousand dollar additional payment into the police pension, we've done that four or five years now in a row. That pension, if you all recall, was down in thirty, thirty-ish percent funded. I think now we're mid-seventies. Seventy-four percent funded, that is huge, that Mayor Stoner was pretty adamant, champion with the additional CPPRT, we were witnessing really made a valiant effort to get the police pension fund funded, so we'd like to do another two hundred and fifty thousand, and maybe we can end up mid-eighty percent funded. And that's huge for any municipality, large, small, you name it. A lot of them operate down near that thirty-ish percent funded. Line one ninety-nine, the police range. We, we would like to add outbuilding out there that officers use on a fairly regular basis, they'd like to put some gutters on it and air conditioning in it so that they can be out there, obviously in June, July, August, and all their year on and everything and kind of cool off, so that is the police range, increase from twenty-five hundred to five thousand. Line two oh three, publications, printing, pretty good increase from sixty-five hundred to eleven thousand. Chief Bros, and I, I think this, the only word that comes to mind is kind of the community policing is getting out, getting publications, getting coloring books, hitting the streets, getting to know the kids, so on and so forth, so I think that would be money well spent, so not much changed really on, on page four, other than what I unless, somebody's got a question?
Okay, so where are we on staff, are we, are we about the same?
There's not a huge increase in salaries, I think.
Correct, so, so keep in mind, our staffing is an A, B plus seven. We have put that in the budget for two years, but we've never, you know, by the time we get close, we lose one, so we are testing this Friday. It looks like we already have, we have, our seventh is in the academy now, he graduates December nineteenth. We have room for one, and it looks like we may luck out. I don't want to put the cards on the horse, but I have a good feeling we're going to have our eighth relatively quickly.
That would put you full.
We would be at
And, and this number is reflective of, of course, the academy. All right.
Any, any other questions, is a good question? Okay, page five continues with police department. Line two thirty-two, academy, continuing education. Increase that a little bit for Lexapro.
That is our policies and procedures. They update them darn near monthly, with, especially with the Safety Act, the Training and Standards Board puts out a lot of new policies, procedures, and that keeps us updated, and we also have daily training bulletins that the officers are required to take on a monthly basis, that way they know the policy, we know the policy, and they have acknowledged that policy. We didn't always have that.
Yeah. Line two thirty-eight, squad car laptops. I think that will outfit all the squads with laptops.
Correct, the, the plan, so these are the same ones that the sheriff's office are, are starting to phase in, because they're in the same boat we are, our laptops are getting to the end of their lifespan. And so the hope is, we would also get docking stations that go into the police department, so we are no longer buying desktops. They can bring your laptop out of the squad car, into the office, type reports, do accidents, whatever they need to do, so it does cut down from the desktops that we will have, because they'll have the docks in there.
Multi-use.
Correct.
And we cannot get the docking stations
And we cannot get the docking stations anymore.
We, we did.
With, they're getting old and we cannot get. To Rob's credit, we've been looking, been along the last couple of years trying to make sure that, that they work in the squad cars at least themselves.
So doubling up, easy to plug and play. Okay. Line two forty-one, squad car replacement, sixty-four thousand. That includes equipping them with all the necessary accessories that go on them. I think, Rob, you have, with this replacement, you, you're, you only, you've got one left in the fleet that will need to be replaced at some point?
At some point, yes. I don't think we would have to do that exactly in FY twenty twenty-six.
Yeah.
Because it, keep in mind, last year, we purchased three because our fleet was aging, starting to cost more than whatever the agency thinks, a thousand dollars, and wasn't worth half that. So this would get us to even part of our, most of our fleet has no more than roughly sixty thousand.
Yeah. Line two forty-eight, the body cameras, you know, we bought, we spent, I'm gonna assume about fifty grand this year. So we got a thousand bucks in there for just maintenance, repair, whatever might be needed for those. So all in all, police department expenditures, not mu, much up from current year. Any, any other questions for me or Rob? Fire department, page six. Utilities telephone, line three one one. That's a little bit of an increase, and I think Chief Repke, is that for cell service on?
Laptops, we have laptops.
Yep, yep. So there's that increase. I always like to point out, when, when payments are coming up to expire, that won't be on the books at some point in the near future. Line three twenty-three, rescue pumper truck, seventy-five thousand and change. Last payment, I believe, is next year. So all in all, with the, and, and the fire department has another expenditure under capital improvements. I'll get to that when we get to that page. That, like I mentioned earlier, they got that grant for seventy, sixty thousand, seven hundred or something. So total fire department is less, a little bit under what we had this year. Questions for Chief Repke or I? Thank you, John. Page seven, Public Works. Line three seventy-five, increased beautification from twenty thousand to twenty-five thousand. I think Rebecca Niemer does an outstanding, fabulous job on beautification program. That program's the only thing we get a compliment on?
It is a true asset to our community.
Yeah.
Everybody loves it.
Nancy, have you had a phone call on utility billing clerk giving you a compliment?
No.
No?
I get them on the string all the time.
Okay.
They stop, they, they stop me telling.
So increased that a little bit, perhaps do some tree replacement downtown. I don't, I don't have anything else that is much different than this year and the next year on page seven, unless there's a question for Brad Baker or Ryan? Okay, page eight, Public Works continued. Under equipment replacement program, line four seventeen, other equipment. You'll see a pretty large increase from sixteen thousand, one hundred and sixty-five thousand five hundred. That is for, we literally use something similar to a manure spreader at the green waste facility to spread the leaves and grass. It is absolutely necessary. We can't burn the leaves and grass in the air burner because they're completely saturated, and they don't burn, they, they, they put the fire out when you put them in the burner. So we spread them across the landfill cap currently. And then it also, there's two other purchases in that, a mini-wheel loader. Public Works has requested that for a few years now. What that will do is eliminate the use of a backhoe when we do the brush pickup the first Tuesday of every month. It's much smaller, compact piece of equipment, much easier to get in and out of the roadway and yards. And you can see more what you're picking up than you can in a backhoe.
Won't, won't tear up the ground?
It'll make that a lot easier. Whereas in a backhoe, you, you can only feel it.
You know what I'm saying?
It's, it's, it's tough. It is tough.
That, that's the intent. So we'll, I think the, the plan is to trade in the, the paddle wheel scraper on that. That's a huge piece of equipment that served us well when we excavated for the detention basin enlargement at the middle school. Served us well when we stripped topsoil out of Oberheim Park. It, it served some, some cart structure, repair work. We haven't used it in over a decade.
Pretty close to, yeah.
Yeah. And then the, another purchase would be a mini excavator. Our current excavator would be traded in for a much-needed upgraded mini excavator. So that is the three elements, the other equipment of one hundred and sixty-five thousand five hundred. One of the things that'll be coming up, line four eighteen, the dump truck, that's gonna be paid off in two thousand twenty-six. The air burner line four nineteen will also be paid off in two thousand twenty-six. Everything said and done, Public Works expenditures, not much of an increase from two thousand twenty-four to two thousand twenty-five.
Do we have much more efficient lighting since the electricity budget went down half?
That, electricity.
Street, four oh seven.
Yeah, four oh seven, that's a good, good question, Mike. Most, that was for the install of streetlights along Old Route Forty-seven, Lodge Park area.
It says electricity, so I think they use.
Any other questions? Okay. Page nine. Aquatic Center. Line four seventy, salaries increased, I don't know, a, a little bit. Most of that is due to the number of lifeguards that are required, and minimum wage goes up another dollar in two thousand twenty-five to fifteen dollars now at the end. That, that was the plan, step increases of a dollar through two thousand twenty-five. Okay. So line five oh four, aquatic center expenditures, about the same for two thousand twenty-five. Mindy, do you want to add anything to that? I thought.
Sorry, I was trying to unmute it. No, everything looks good there on my part and your part.
Okay. Page ten. Recreation Department, line five thirty-six, participants, P J F L, increased a little bit. There seems to be an increase in participation with J F L. That will only increase when this year's, the Sages bring us another state championship, Ryan?
That's the hope.
Okay.
No pressure.
That's the intent.
We're counting on you, Ryan.
Yeah.
I give everything, everything we got.
Line five forty-four, a little bit of an increase in salaries. Again, that's minimum wage. Cause and effect. I don't have much change on the rest of page ten for recreation.
One of the meetings trying to do a drainage project out at the Ball Diamonds.
At the Forest Preserve Park?
Yeah.
You had mentioned, is there any way we could?
Yeah.
And I had said, you need a place to discharge it.
Right.
And where would that be? I have not asked the Forest Preserve if they would allow that. I have no idea. I have a gut feeling based upon recent conversations with the Forest Preserve. I don't think they would have much interest in tearing up a forest preserve with tiles.
What are the other options there? Is there different surface to put something underneath it? All right, okay.
Are you, are you trying not to have rainouts?
Yes, yeah.
I don't know, Mike.
Okay.
You asked about eliminating the rainouts, the only thing be under drains. And then you gotta take outlet them into that camp, not camp.
Okay, well, you said you were looking into that, and I was out on this stuff.
Nope, it's not included in next year's budget.
All right.
Any, any other questions on page ten? Page eleven, wrapping up recreation. Only line that, that has any much difference would be line five ninety-six, football. Added fifteen hundred dollars, I believe. Most of that is probably helmets.
Equipment, getting equipment recertified, and just, as Ryan can tell you, it's super expensive for football.
Yeah. So everything said and done, total recreation expenditures up a little bit from FY twenty-four. Any questions on page eleven? Okay. So continuing with kind of how I started off with showing you what's in reserves, and the budget was a working document during the committee meetings. And I would get you figures for some of these capital improvements that I did not have available at that time. I, I said I would have them and present them to you tonight. So what I thought would be the best way to do that is, on page twelve, is capital improvements and the overall general fund expenditures. It'll be a black number, it'll be a red number of whatever. So I gave you two, page twelve, twelve A and twelve B. So let me, twelve A. The differences between twelve A, twelve A, we're doing, propose to do Freedom Park. And nothing on Oberheim. Twelve B is the reverse of that. Postpone Freedom Park and pull the trigger on Oberheim Park. So. Line seven oh seven. Expenditure of two hundred and forty-six dollars for Grant Buchanan. That will be on there. Paid off in two thousand twenty-six. That is that additional non-referendum tax, property tax, two hundred and forty-six dollars. In, this is the two hundred and forty-six thousand dollars out. Line seven oh eight, alternate four A access, I have not, that has not been completed. I would ask that we leave that in for two thousand twenty-five. And hopefully, I can come up with, get that resolved next year. Line seven ten, Main Street, Independent Street, William Streets. That has been kind of a pressing thing with a few on this council. So we actually adjusted the appropriation ordinance and put eighty thousand dollars in there to do the preliminary engineering this year so that we can bid that out as early next year as possible to make sure, ensure that has to be done before school starts. Grant Buchanan went into the school after the school began. You can't do that with this one. So that's one million, one hundred and fifty thousand. That's reflected in twelve A and twelve B. Line seven fourteen, the Bike Trail West, that's the one point two miles from Green Apple Lane. Going out towards Cisco. We proposed doing about thirty-eight thousand dollars in rock. We'll go in there, Public Works Department will clear the railbed of saplings and trees and brush and whatever. And then we'll bring in, haul in some rock. And then we have a, a pretty good cooperative arrangement with township, municipal township. So they have a grader, Alan Sprinkles, top-notch grader operator. Other segments, he's come in and used his grader to grade this C A six rock off, spread it out. And then we can pave it in a future fiscal year. You'll see, line seven twenty-five, Robert C. Burke Memorial Park. In twenty-four, I combined Robert C. Burke Park and Freedom Park of six million, if you recall. And that included four in, in bonds and two million out of reserves. That was how that was set up. So this year, because of a couple of options that is presented to you tonight, was best to go ahead and separate those. So you'll see. So you'll see nothing under Oberheim Park. And you'll see line 725, 2,178,251 for Burke Park. That is what's left on that project for construction, engineering and construction. We will get at least, we'll probably get two invoices from the engineers and from the contractor yet this year. So that number will not be 2,168,000. I don't know what it's going to end up being. But if they don't submit an invoice, then that's what it's going to be. But they're going to want to get paid. Line 726. That is the latest and greatest revised Freedom Park cost estimate and engineering. 1.9 million. Line 727. Debt service for Burke Freedom Park. There was, this is the third fund I mentioned earlier, $100,000 from gaming. And that's through 2030 again. Under buildings, line 735. That is 115,500. That includes the 60,700 of the grant. And then 55,000 just for what would be necessary repair work. And small upgrades to the current footprint of the fire station. Try to get some air conditioning in there. These guys go to a fire and it's July 15th. It's it's a little warm. Meetings in the training room, they they do a great job of training. And have have since John's been there. So 115,500 is 55,000. Repair work. Concrete work on the on the bays. And then that grant of 60,700. Line 736, the public works loan payment. That last payment is in 2028. So we will have. Like I mentioned, there are three or four line items that are, will be coming, will be expiring either next year or 2028. So please understand those that will be money available. It's not millions of dollars, but it's going to be coming off the expenditure book. So the bottom line, line 801. Let me start the approved budget for this year '24. We were in the red 2 and 1/2 million. We are not going to be in the red at all this year. Because Burke Park's not finished. Freedom Park did not get constructed. So we should not be in the red at all. We'll be end up in the black this year. The long and short of this, doing Freedom Park and nothing on Oberheim. We, this general fund budget would be in the red 6.1 million. Any questions on? Maybe a better question, any concerns? On that, and I. How much do we have in reserves? 16 and 1/2 million plus another million. Okay. Our our an annual operations and maintenance budget for the year for the city of Monticello is about, I think it's less than 5 million.
So we have three years.
Yeah. We have three years.
As well, that's why I said.
You said that usually it's like six months.
A lot of municipalities feel fortunate if they have half a years in reserve.
Okay.
You want to talk about 12B and?
Yeah, please do.
12B. The short of it, nothing on Freedom Park and $8 million on Oberheim.
Is that what we're looking at right there? Is that $8 million right now?
So, thank you. I gave you the rendering of revised. So I got the cost estimate Friday morning, had a Zoom call Friday afternoon and Monday. And another phone call this morning with the engineering firm. So this plan has no bells or whistles to it, none. It has four use soccer fields. North is to your right. Apple Tree obviously is the bottom of the page. The library shows up there. So four soccer fields. And this is to meet the needs of the Recreation Department. We went and then see up in that same quadrant is one multi-use field, not two. There is no synthetic turf, there's no artificial turf. It is all natural turf. It has kind of going south from that, those fields. There's the detention basin that's required. I will say part of the stormwater management. Those smallest soccer fields labeled B. In certain heavier rain events, they will be underwater. So water is going to back up and then water is going to drain out. We feel if we have to move because of rainwater, we can play in the outfield of the baseball softball, or we can move and and stripe the multi-use field. We can, we go out there and paint small soccer fields on it. But we can make accommodations during those certain rain events. Mohammed has soccer field floodplain if you ever, you know, drive, drive down there. So you know, some concessions are being made. There is no bells whistles to this. Continuing kind of down, there's two baseball softball fields, not four. You'll see in the red shaded is future phases. So there's room to build two more baseball softball fields. If, when necessary. There's one entrance. One way to get in this vehicular, one vehicular access, that's from Route 47. You come kind of due south off 47, you're flanked by some parking lots. And that is it. There's no, there's minimal curb and gutter. It's going to be an asphalt road with some small roadside ditches. You do curb and gutter, you got to do storm sewers, storm structures. That's all eliminated for the vast part. There were, there is a multi-use path. If you can see it, that leads from the the bike and hike trail extension into this park and all the way to, there's a concession building in the middle of kind of the four baseball softball fields. There's a concession stand next to that C use field. Concession stand, press box, storage. There, there is no access from Green Apple Lane. There is no vehicular access through Orchard Lane. There is. You can barely see it, it's H by Orchard Lane. That is an eight foot multi-use path that folks in Apple Tree can't, pedestrians could access this site without going all the way out to 47. We had, we heard some concern from I'm not going to say how legitimate the concern was. But it was vocalized, this this awful light pollution coming from the field. Well, there are no fields next to Apple Tree subdivision. A little bit of an outcry on all the increased traffic. It's going to go through Apple Tree. Phase one, there's no vehicular traffic. So we have, we have a pretty vast buffer from the recreational fields and the presidential subdivision. There is, there's no trees or planting, there's no playground, there's no pickleball, there's no tennis, there's no basketball, there's no terrace building with indoor activities. There's no elevated multi-use open space that we were looking at. There's no shelters. This is a bare bones minimum.
Then it's a no.
I would ask to do, reduce the scale and do it in phases, what the direction I was given.
With that price point. The original price point is.
We don't even know what.
Million dollars at one time.
It was. Even have an original price point, so.
I appreciate all the work.
Yeah.
Into this.
Well, the biggest point is that I wanted to bring up and going back to the original thing that we talked about in the beginning, have they done any fundraising?
No.
Right.
And and they, it won't happen.
It then?
It will not happen.
Then let's invest what we already have into the parks that we have. Instead of creating a new one.
We don't have, we don't have.
That's the thing, we we don't have what we need. We don't have the fields in other places.
Can we, can we think about the actual need? Because what we're talking about, while I appreciate sport, I'm not trying, I don't want to beat anybody up. But this is not a need. This is not a need for a city. This is, I love the recreation. But I'm telling, but I don't believe this is an actual need. And to to the, to be more direct. If this is what needs to happen and if this is not enough, then this needs to go to a referendum for the fundraising for, to get the, get the bond to do what they, what you want to do. And then when it doesn't come through the first time, we need to recognize that's people saying, we don't think this is important. I think that's where we're coming to. I know we spent 20 plus years on this thing and I re, I recognize the work and I appreciate the work. But I'm, the reality is I don't know that people actually want this.
There was more interest in this thing than any other thing in the 10 or 15 years that I've been around and coming to these meetings. And this thing here than everything else combined. Garbage.
And I hear what you're saying, I don't see it, just to just.
I understand. We had the biggest, this place was passed when we had a meeting.
And that's fantastic, but there's no dollars.
There is an interest here.
There isn't no dollars.
And it fits in with our.
Now. It's, I still.
We have.
At $8 million for just this, I don't, we, that's $12 million in the negative of a month, just for this year, if that's what I'm looking at.
I'll let them explain it then.
Please explain that, that would be wonderful.
But it does fit the strategic plan. We did, we did a strategic plan, this was A in terms of what the community said this was the need.
The community said more parks.
It's like called out as Oberheim Park is a long-term goal in the strategic plan.
Okay, well then, again, dollars. This is a start. You know, you've got to start sometime. This is the words forever, never, never. Still upgrade it, you can still add to it.
Well, Terry, you said this 8 million is for all of it and you wanted to do it in phases. So would it be?
This is, this.
This, this is the first.
Million dollars.
Uh huh.
Oh, okay, sorry.
Yeah, this is for what's not shaded.
Okay.
And red. It's for the bare bones.
So maybe Carlos can talk about, there, there is a, this can be a revenue stream so that it would help offset some of this cost in the future. So there are some things events we can have here that would, and also bring people into the community. It helps offset what this cost is.
I know I'm not supposed to pine from, from the chair. But I've lived here, you know, 50 some years. It used to be, we, we worked it well with the school district in sharing facilities. As time has gone on, the facility usage has dwindled. It's almost nothing now.
Am I correct, Carlos? Yes, and it's like for this year, I mean, we used to have five or six soccer fields down there. We do not use the turf other than for practices in the area.
What I'm saying, what I'm saying is Recreation Department, to my knowledge owns, we own the, by the land, by the landfill, we own, what do we got?
Pea. Peanut. We got there.
T-ball.
We're smart with those fields and we've actually met with Forest Preserve or talked with them about putting new lights in out there this year and
they're not interested, I'm sure.
They're not interested, they would be, but there's a lot of their stuff, it would cost us a lot, lot more money. So I, they could also tell us at any time too. That, because there's no written agreement on the use of those fields, so.
I, I, I really think that this is, these are necessary. I do think they're important to the community. Because we have a lot of young people who make, take advantage of our recreation program. And it would be nice to have a place that's stable where people can participate. The way it is now, it's poor.
Yeah, I, I can tell you, we have people playing in D-land. Our Monticello teams are playing in D-land, they're playing in Cisco, they're playing in White Heath. They're going elsewhere because we don't have facilities.
Well, and I, I heard, I heard a comment from someone the other day. Because White Heath's putting in a second field. And someone said, if I won the lottery today, I would, I would give it to White Heath because at least they're doing something.
That's right.
He said, he said, Monticello is setting back and talking and not doing a darn thing. At least White Heath is trying to do something. So I would, I would reward them for their efforts.
And I, I think there's something else that we're failing to see. And I, Eric is talking about where's the money and where's the fundraising, what the? We've worn ourselves out trying to come up with something. Am I, am I telling the truth?
We've worked on this.
How much have, how much money have we spent trying to get something put together? Well, I mean, and if the community is not that interested in fundraising, what are you going to do? Nothing because the community, they, they won't come up with big bucks, you can't, well, can't think that way.
We're talking about a baseball field here, one of the things. So I hate to be too cliche here and use the line, if you build it, they will come. But if you put this in place and people see the, the see the, the design and stuff, you have a better chance of funding some of those other phases with people saying, you know, we've got two ball fields or whatever. Now we can go to people and say, hey, look at what we're doing here. We'd like to put another field over there, we would like for you to help us. You have a better chance than taking people out into the middle of a field with nothing around. And saying envision what we've got. Now you can say, hey, here's what we've got, here's how we want to make it better.
I, I, you know, I, I think there's different opinions on if it's needed or not. But I, I can tell you, Carlos and I have worked on some. But I, I can tell you, Carlos and I have worked on some addressing the needs, not the wants, addressing the needs of the Recreation Department. The City of Monticello's Recreation Department. And we, Mike Coon chaired a committee and, and they presented let's say some, a lot of wants. And that led to that cost estimate that we all had sticker shock on it. And it, so in the school district, you know, they put in synthetic turf and some touted it as it's, it's for the community. But Carlos can tell you better than I. There are restrictions to those fields. There are the competitive leagues and the rec leagues all needing, they didn't increase the number of fields they have down there. They, they didn't. So there's competitive leagues and recreational leagues of the same age groups, plural, vying and that, that specific location, all every night. It's weather permitted. They did not increase the number of fields.
They wanted to charge everybody two hundred and fifty dollars per game to play on those fields. Schools did.
And, and so Tim and I, that's your
That's how you're saying, I mean, that's what you're saying. We're going to, we're going to raise money the same way by having this. We're going to charge people to come out here to this.
So we, I mean, we
And that what, I mean, you're saying, you're saying this can be a revenue booster, yes? Isn't that what you said?
You host tournaments.
So, but again, you're hosting tournaments, you're charging people to play. Yes?
Absolutely. I mean, yes. We, for example, we played in Morton.
Yeah.
My daughter's team this summer and there was an entry fee to play and it was hosted by the, the Morton Tourist Association. They, they invested money upfront to get people there. It was a three-day or a two-day tournament, two or three-day tournament. That's going to bring people into town. The way these tournaments are designed, they're Saturday, Sunday tournaments. Up to two hours away. People like to stay in the Best Western. People like to stay here or whatever. I'm not saying that, that, I, I don't think that, to say that it's a revenue builder. I don't think that we're not going to try, we're not going to try to
It's not going to pay for itself.
It's not going to pay for itself at all. It's not. This is addressing a need within our community. And i- if we make any, anything back, great. But if we don't, we're spending the money to invest in, in, in our kids and the activities. And, and I mean, I think you look at the, the trend of youth sports and where they're going, you know? I, I don't think any of us would be opposed to, we want our kids to play as many sports and be involved in as many activities and stay active and do all this stuff and, and and they do a great job of providing opportunities for our kids with what little space they can find to have them run around. And you're, you're limiting what you can do with what we've got, you know? Not to say that Forest Preserve is going to go away. We, we could add five softball, baseball fields to this community and they'd be full. I mean, a- as, as a coach who's coaching travel softball right now and trying to schedule places to play games, the they, we'd, we'd fill as many fields as you put in this town. So what you're going to see is by adding this, you're going to add other things, opportunities. We could bring adult league back, which we've lost to Ivestale, you know, or, or wherever it went off to. We can add, you know, other opportunities by having more facilities and more offerings.
It's an investment in Monticello to do something like this. And, and compared to where, you know, this is not bells and whistles. This is need. We, we, we don't have, we have no fields. We don't, we have great fields. Virtually nothing that the city is offering. And we don't have access to any of the fields the schools have. In fact, we have less access we've ever had. At, you know, because school is both the things.
And one thing I will say is getting into this travelable situation, I've visited many local towns. And, and the, the parents who say, you know, like, we're in Meridian, playing on nicer fields than what Monticello has. We're in
Dalton City.
Dalton City, playing on nicer fields. I mean, we're, we're talking towns minuscule to the size of Monticello and their facilities trump ours. I mean,
So I hear that, I hear your concerns. Talk to us about how, how the twelve million dollars negative, negative budget is going to work. How's that going to work? As, as I'm looking at your twelve B, that's twelve million, two hundred thirteen, two hundred thirteen thousand, four hundred ninety-one dollars in red, right? So was there a plan? Because we can let you talk about the money part of this.
So we, this year we were going to into reserves two million.
Right? Yes, sir.
So this would be, if council wants to go this route, twelve B, I would not do, I would not, let me just say, I would do Oberheim Park and Freedom Park. And now you're talking fourteen, fifteen in, in the red. So you would literally, I, I would be literally, council would approve spending reserves twelve million dollars.
Of the sixteen
Sixteen and a half.
Seventeen.
Seventeen and a half at your disposal. It would go down to four, five million dollars.
Which is still Well, so what we're equating this to, just so I'm clear. So what we're equating this to is then we're going to take three years or two years of budget of the three years of budget reserve we have to spend to make that right, to make that. Is that what I'm understanding?
I, I believe that's correct. We would be
I mean, we said earlier, the, the budget for the city is about six, five to six million dollars a year, a year. We said that the sixteen million we had laid aside was about three years. I'm just, what we said in here tonight is all I'm, is all I'm going off of. So we're going to trade two years of budget safety for this.
So, yes, we're spending a lot of money out of reserves. There's no arguing that.
No, I'm not arguing. I just want to clarify. That's what we're talking about.
So we will be left with approximately one year operations and maintenance. We still get, I mean, the, the, twenty twenty-six, we'll still get CPPRT, the tax revenue, the gaming revenues. That for the most part, it's a balanced budget for, from previous years. We budget in the red sometimes, but it usually, not always, usually the revenues in are more than the expenditures out.
Agreed. I totally agree with that. Yeah.
So, you know, we, we've done not, if, if we do the main Independence William Street, that will be nine million dollars spent on roads since two thousand and sixteen.
Yeah.
I mean, we've, we've not neglected the roads.
Yeah.
Um, and, and we need to, to address those and we have, you guys have addressed those. We will have that approximately one annual, one fiscal year in reserves. Revenues and expenditures usually are okay.
Where, 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 where were we in reserves five years ago?
When I was appointed city administrator, we were six million dollars in reserves.
We made that ten million in seventeen. And then we have an opportunity to take what we've saved over just five years. Long-term benefit. We're investing, taking that money and we're investing it in something that the city has asked for years.
And I would add this. When, when was Oberheim, when was this park conceived? When was the idea that we need this? Twenty years ago?
No.
Two thousand
Twenty That'd be plus
That ground idea, why, we need twenty plus years.
I mean, that's
So I would argue this. Over the past twenty years, we've amassed enough money in our general fund to make this project work.
Yeah.
We've been spinning our wheels for twenty years. And over the course of that twenty years, we've been physically responsible and, and have grown that money to the point that we can now say, we can do it. Rather than say, wow, that's a lot of money. I'd still like to keep that money in the bank. At the end of the day, our job is to be physically responsible, make sure we have money for, for safety, but it's not to amass as much money as we can without investing it back into the community. There's no reason to set on three years of operating when six months of operating is considered good. That, that is just hoarding the money, saying that we're not going to invest it back into the community. We're just going to keep this money growing and growing and growing.
Here's our opportunity, right?
And here's our opportunity to say, we've saved this money over this time that we've been talking about this project. We've got this one. Here, we're going to go make this project. And we're still going to be setting over that six-month operating cost of emergency fund by double.
Terry, you said that our budget for, for last year was two million dollars, two and a half million dollars in the red and we wound up, we're going to wind up in the black. So there's two hundred, two and a half million dollars right there that we would have spent just on this year.
We put back.
We put, yeah, we, we have, so the fact that we have been really
We've been, we've been lean on budgets because I've insisted on that since I've been mayor. Am I telling the truth, Derek? Guy crab all the time about.
You're not the only one.
I know you're not the only one, but we have been conscientious about how we spend money. I think it could be a good, you know, we, we've been very fortunate.
Yeah.
And the school has CPPRT, but Larry, with your, you know, you, you were adamant and pretty adamant this year, if I recall correctly. Put two hundred and fifty thousand dollars in the police pension. So we've taken that from thirty-some percent to mid-seventies percent. In four years, again, we've done, doing the road that's proposed for twenty-five, nine, over nine million dollars in roads since two thousand and fifteen. And
And the wastewater treatment plant.
The plant.
And and new bike and hike trails.
Yeah, we've had a lot of major upgrades and stuff.
What we do. The streets
A lot more than happened ten, the, the years before that became mayor. It's nine years and we were before that. Wherever they continued to kick the can down the road, didn't spend any money ever. We've spent money and we've saved. I think we've done our due diligence.
I would just Interject. Your number was not quite accurate. Since they ended twenty eighteen, they had just over two million dollars in general waters, Derek. So we went from two to seven.
This is two thousand and eighteen. Yeah, we've done well.
That, that's even better. So you can interject that.
I won't have you too heavily. We have somewhat about four somewhat major things coming off the books here in the next two or three years too.
Yeah, there's, there was the truck, the tower payment, the burner, the dump truck. They're not huge ticket items.
But
And, and you know, there, we're still going to, a dump truck is probably in the near future. But you know, done, getting reserves down to that four, five million dollars. You know, we're not going to be able to do a one-point-five million dollar road. I mean, to, to, we're not going to be able to do that. Like we have since two thousand and sixteen. But man, I don't know if we have many roads left to do.
The course of six years, we've grown the reserves eighteen million. I'm not saying we're going to do that in the next six years, but
We're going to wipe it out in one year.
Right. We're not going to wipe it out.
You know that.
I'm just doing, I'm just looking at what we're looking at. How do I know that it's twelve million dollars and it's possibly fourteen million dollars? We'll do that both parks. So we're going, I mean, I understand one, one year is great. I get it, but I'm like, let's pump the brakes a little bit, just a little look, just for a minute.
But, but
And I understand
Lot.
Huh?
It means pump the brakes.
I get it. I get it. I get it. But I'm, I'm just, there's, I mean, there'll be a vote and they'll, it'll go one way or the other. I get it.
I mean, Terry, you said this is like the no frills, basic
Right.
Lowest you can go, you know?
Right.
Plan, right? There's like, I, I don't think, I don't know if we can, need more time to look for another option because seems like this
I don't, I don't think there's another option out there. I think
Next option.
I think if, if, if anything, they've done all the due diligence and found everything they can find. I, I'll give, I mean, I'll give you that all day long. That's a, tails off on this. And if you say, if he says this is base bump, this is basic, this is basic. This is the least we can do.
A lot of no's. So let me, I, I thought I heard somebody say, we're not voting on this tonight.
No.
So I
But I, but I recognize at some point, we're going to vote on this.
Yes. But I thought I heard somebody ask, we're not. It's, this is discussion only. Hope to be some direction from the council. I'm going to come back with twelve A or twelve B. To your point, Elaine, the engineers sent me a cost estimate Friday morning. That estimate for this was eleven million dollars. And I said, so then we had a Zoom meeting Friday afternoon and I said, no, no, no. And started cutting. They had, you know, the press box was a really nice press box concession area. You, you start picking apart, the engineers have to give me the worst-case scenario. Here's a contractor price for installing silk fence. It's fifteen thousand dollars just for one, one line item. Well, I can go to Menards and get, get the same silk fence and our public works guys could do it for fifteen hundred dollars. So I start cutting and cutting and cutting. And then the engineers thought about it all weekend, obviously, because we had another phone call this morning. So the engineers and I feel comfortable that we can do the construction and engineering for eight million and, and maybe by the time we get into full-blown construction plans and bid documents, maybe it's a little, it won't be a lot less than eight million, but I think there are still things that we might be able to, to cut here and there. And I, and please know, you, you all approved the budget and obviously the appropriation ordinance and the bid documents go out. You guys have, if the bids come over, that comes to council. You have, you will have, are the authority to reject any and all bids. If the bids come in under budget, I would hope that the consensus, not, you know, the majority of the council would, okay, this is what we want to do. We're in it to win it and approve it. But if, if the bids come in at ten million, can reject any and all bids.
Very similar to how we operated with Freedom Park this year. We approved Freedom Park. Bids came in high. We said no go. And it came off the books.
Well, never, it never even went to bid, but the cost estimate kept increasing.
Estimate came in higher and we said, all right.
Said no.
Yep. Same thing would happen here. If we say, okay, we're in on this and they come back and they're like, ah, it's going to be twelve million. We go, man.
So we approved the six million, which was Freedom and Burke Park. What, what's the, what's Burke Park going to wind up?
Two, one, six, eight.
We will have two, a little over two million to pay next year.
I know, but what, what will that, what will Burke Park the total? Because we, we approved the six billion.
The six million was for two parks.
Correct. That's what I'm asking.
Four million was for Burke.
Four million for Burke and two million for the other one roughly, right?
So
Yeah. So we've got two millions so far that we've saved by not doing Freedom Park. By not doing Freedom Park.
But that's not what he's saying, he's saying do Freedom Park as well.
No, no, 12A.
I'm sorry.
No.
At one point you did say your, your favorite thing to do would be to do both parks at the same time at 14.
I apologize, but I, I thought I said I would not propose.
Okay.
Doing Oberheim and Freedom. I, I would postpone, if the council as a majority wants to do Oberheim, I would postpone Freedom Park.
And ultimately, when we talk about going in 12 million, I get it, the big picture is 12 million. We're looking at 8 million for Oberheim Park. Be half of our reserves. Or. Roughly 2 million for Freedom Park, which would be an eighth of our reserves.
Actually, no, that's already paid, that's already taken care of, that's, that doesn't come out of the reserves.
That doesn't come out of reserves?
Freedom would not.
No. That's already part of that bond.
Got you.
It depends on how.
Right, because it's showing on here that yes, that's.
I'm sorry, I missed an opening bond, 2 million, 4 million bond.
Can I ask a question? My understanding, we borrowed how much?
4.75 million.
4.75 million. Are we bound to spend money on Freedom Park or on Park? Or can we use whatever we don't use for one or the other for something else?
Good question, uh, no, we are not bound.
We are not bound.
To spend that on.
So it's open ended.
Language in the bond states.
It's open ended. Okay. I, I, I think that's what I understood, I just wanted to make sure that my understanding was correct.
Yes. I looked that up when the council decided to pull the plug on Freedom.
Yeah.
I reached out to Tim King, our council, and he verified that money could be spent.
Terry, this is Callie.
Yeah.
Uh, one thing I will say, since you have obligated TIFF funds to pay for said bond and Oberheim Park is not in the TIFF district. I do not think that is legal.
That's where I'm at.
Yeah, Maura and I talked about that today.
There's another tank.
Yep.
Terry, you. I've stayed quiet through all this and I'm going to stay quiet for a while longer. I'm still thinking, but you're the steward and have been for a long time. You know, you and I have had a lot of discussions. Are you personally comfortable with taking your operating budget, your cushion to run the city? Down to that number that from, from you, we've pretty well had carte blanche to do what we wanted. But if we spend this money and your operating budget goes, your cushion goes down to six months, you've got, you've got six months of money. Your operating capital to work with. Are you personally comfortable with that? Do you, you think that's a wise move?
I would have one year.
One year.
In reserves. I would be comfortable doing Oberheim and not an additional 2 million for Freedom. Because that would be, that would be too, too much out of reserves. I feel, you know. We have grown reserves. Successfully over many years. And every year it's increased. So I, I think that would continue. Right? And I said, we won't be able to do one and a half, $2 million road project. I mean, capital improvements, capital improvements will decrease drastically. When we don't have the reserves.
Okay, thank you. But I, you know, I remind, as everybody knows, we're all going to have a vote one of these days. When it comes down, all of us have a vote. So think about it, study it, think about it, think about where you want to go, what you want to do. You know, I know some of us have kids in school, some of us don't have. I got a grandson, but I'm, I'm looking at, at both sides, trying to look at both sides of the coin for long term and, and short term. The Freedom Park thing is a wonderful thing, just had Veterans Day, how can you deny it? You know, it is what it is, but, and this is a big but, it adds nothing to the overall structure of the city. The Oberheim Park thing adds a lot. It's a ton of money, but it adds a tremendous amount to the future of what's going to happen. The, the Freedom Park thing, we might be able to come back and do it in a couple of years or three years or whatever. But as far as benefit to the city, not so much. Benefits the guys that, that served and gave their lives and did all that, I'm not taking an ounce away from that. But overall, probably Oberheim in the long run is going to, as Ryan's talked about, probably overhaul. It's going to do better for us in the long run. We lack a lot, and everybody knows, we lack a lot of support. That's what always has bugged me about Oberheim. And I'm going to stop because I'm so boxed here, I don't want to. We lack.
I have a stick.
We lack the support facility. That's what's always bugged me about Oberheim is that we don't have a place for people to stay. We don't have a place for people to eat.
Right.
We don't have a facility that sells any type of equipment in town. You can't buy a baseball bat in Monticello.
Exactly.
Nothing. And I don't see that anybody's proposing to say, hey, if you build that, I'll open a sporting goods store here. I don't think that's going to happen, you know? So as far as bringing other people in, some, but they're more than likely going to look at someplace they could stay. Someplace they could eat, someplace they could support their team, da, 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 da. And we don't have that and we're not going to have it. It's not going to happen. So think, think about, you know, I think about those things and I've thought about them for four or five years now, you know? I, I just don't, I'm not sure where we could go with that. So that's all I'm going to say about it, but I, if you're okay, if you're comfortable, would be comfortable with that operating budget. Well, and I, you know, we've got to.
You know, that kind of put me on the spot that.
I'm not, I'm not trying to.
Would you do it? So I just remembered what Maura said and made me feel a little bit better. We were 2 million in reserves. Our O and M may not have been quite 5 million then, maybe it was, I think it was 4.5 million. And we had 2 million in reserves. And, and we did okay.
You would hope to continue to be able to add some to that every year again, right?
Yeah, I think this is how, this is how budgets go, this is how we operate. Want something nice? We save our money, we're responsible, put money away, hold it back, and then one day we can afford that nice thing. We're at the point where we can afford the nice thing.
Right, and the, but I mean, going back to the point Wendy was saying is that, yes, let's go ahead and we have the money to go ahead and do this part of the park. However. Who are we going to attract to come to it? Because they're going to have to drive to Champaign, they're going to have to drive to Cater, they're going to go to Bloomington to stay somewhere.
No, I don't. The kid is, is a community thing. Right. And the effort all else is extra.
Yeah.
Kids already play at forest preserve. We have no rights to that land, we have no, and what Mike brought up, can we get the, can we make the fields better? I, I don't want, I don't want to improve something that could be yanked out from under our feet at any minute if they decide to. I don't want to make somebody else's property better in hopes that I can use that. I would rather take the money that I would have spent to make that property better and spend it to make my property that I own, my facilities better. And, and so the idea is, we're not, you, you know, we got on the topic of how is this a revenue stream? I, I, I go away from that. How does this fill the needs of our community as it sits? We have sports teams in this community, sharing two ball diamonds that are well maintained. Inadequate for what we need. This gives us an opportunity to, to, to cater to those people so that our, our teams in Monticello aren't driving to White Heath. To play softball or baseball, aren't driving to Cisco, Dland. And going to surrounding communities to play. Our Monticello teams have to, we're outsourcing our own youth softball and baseball teams. We're sending them to other communities to, to play. And, and when we could have them here. So I, I, I think that we, when we, when we talk about, is it going to attract people? It may attract people, it, it might. I think you could, you could host a two day tournament and use it as a tourist. Thing, we, we could do that. At the end of the day, if we don't make a dime off of this, this is an investment in our kids, in the youth programs. And, and it's an investment in our community.
As people are thinking about living in Monticello, there are any community, safety, schools, amenities. And we, in a lot of ways, we lack the amenities that people are looking for. And so we've, we've done well, people like to live here, it's a great place, we've got excellent schools. But at some point, we are competing with people that want, that, other communities that have things. And they'll make a decision potentially not to live here. And then that affects tax base and affects a lot of things we all enjoy. So even if we don't personally benefit from the fields, we will, I think, get the rewards ways.
And there is silence.
Thank you.
Would you like some direction? Asking for tonight on this or opinions, you got opinions, direction?
I mean, I jotted down, so. You know, 12B and 12A, I don't, I know I haven't heard from everybody, but.
Right, it's to come back to us, right? One of them has to come back to us.
Yeah.
And you need direction on which one of those to bring back to us, correct? So essentially, we're not taking a vote.
Oh.
But you need to know which one you should come back with.
Yep.
So in that sense. I think you should come back with B, if that makes, if that makes your job easier. That's my personal opinion.
Thank you, it does make my job easier.
B.
We don't have, the Pike County Journal has not been in any of our meetings for a long time. But I mean, I think when things get printed and the community finds out about it, that's kind of where you find direction. Will we get, will, will it be a ground well of support? Or will people look at it and they're like, oh.
I, I think it'll be just like everything else, Mike. There'll be a ground swell from about 30 people on, on the hate page.
Yeah.
Community, you won't hear anything because.
They're happy.
They're happy, people do that.
That's right.
I'm sorry, I, I don't, I don't think paper makes that much difference.
Yeah, I, I.
I think, I think Terry needs direction, can someone else give him some direction?
I, to throw just one action item out there, I know you said you had several phone calls and were able to shave $3 million in just a few phone calls. But just, I don't know if this rendering reflects those phone calls, but, and I'm not qualified to speak to it, but there's, there's a lot of parking here. I, I don't know, it, it appears actually all the parking, I don't see where there'd be more parking going in, in the design in the future area. I don't know if that's, and I do understand the scope's been narrowed several times, but there's nearly 300, 300 parking spots here. Is there any opportunity your team and the design team can, can shave more dollar signs off of this?
Uh, I don't know.
And I know we're not working with a lot of time either, so.
I don't know, but you know, parking 300, 281.
Yep.
Is a lot and it's not enough.
Gotcha.
So, and, and the worst, worst is when two games are ending and two games are starting.
Oh, I, I can imagine, yeah.
You need, you need 600.
Parking is. You never have enough parking.
Well, and what we don't want to have happen, the overflow is into the Apple Tree neighborhood. And we don't want that.
Oh, yeah, that would.
That would be a.
That would be a nightmare.
I mean, I, I, I don't want to talk without. Specific knowledge, but I, I do feel like when you're looking at expenses. Paving is, or you know, concrete is, is one of the cheaper.
Oh, we're not doing, we're not doing concrete on the, on this phase. This, he said asphalt is what.
Asphalt, yeah.
That's going to be a cheaper.
It's just.
But we, you know, to cut one off is not going to save you a ton of money, I don't believe.
Right.
You know, that's, I mean, that's not where you're going to save a bunch of money.
In terms of direction, I think you should try to plan for B. Because that's not going to cut you off later on. Like if we, you just plan for A and then later, you know. You want the Oberheim, whatever, then you, you wouldn't be stuck. So in terms of direction, my advice would be go for the biggest one, to plan.
Others, in his direction?
I say B.
Keep yourself open, you know, to.
We're not increasing taxes. Um, we, we have the money to do it, it's something Wendy has asked for in, in the strategic plan. This was very high in the strategic plan. So if we, if that's what they, if the community asks for it, we have the money to do it. And we don't do it, then we're not being very good stewards of what the committee has asked for. So I say B.
And this is just planning, we're not.
Yeah.
Breaking ground, we're not.
Right.
Setting bids or, you know, this is just in terms of.
Putting a budget together.
Yeah.
Putting a document together.
Yeah, and the council, you know, at the next meeting can make a motion however you feel necessary. But I, if, if we're, if, if the council approves 12B. It will be bid and it will be bid as soon as possible and hopefully be constructed. It's entirely in 2025.
Some direction, there's a lot of voices that haven't been heard.
I'm great thinking it after 8:30, so I don't have any thoughts.
You say I'm sorry.
No comment.
Stop's working after 8:30, so we're.
That, that's the way life is on the city council occasionally.
What'd she say?
Sorry, that's the way life is on the city council occasionally.
No, I mean, I, I'm open to both, so.
I'm going to lean more toward B after hearing. And being a part of this community, seeing. What we have and what we don't have, this would be huge for Monticello.
I think you've got a majority.
I do.
Yeah, you do. One, two, three.
I vote B.
Five.
Five. That's on the majority. The mayor would, would side with B.
There you go.
But I, I don't have a vote. I don't, I, I, you know, when it comes down to it, I don't have a vote unless it's a tie. Who hasn't spoken?
I'm for B if that's, that's.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Haven't, you know, have an idea, have to say something.
I've set enough.
Did you pick, did you give him any direction?
I don't have an option right now. A or B, I think was.
A or B is.
I don't care to choose right now.
You have an.
I, I have enough, I'll come with B and then if the council.
I don't, I don't understand why we can't have, have an opinion about something and give someone direction. Okay, let's move on. I spoke, I suspect. We're done, right? You've been through everything.
Yeah, I want to see if anybody else has a question.
And thank you for all the work and time. Something staff's put into this. I know it was countless, countless hours, we appreciate it.
I had, I had a lot of hell, so.
Thank you so much for your efforts, Terry and Maura, Mayor and everybody that, you know, grabbed up this work. Let's have all the persons reports, how about Rodney?
Set it up tonight.
Tom?
Nothing, sir.
Hmm. Third round of the playoffs, Saturday.
Show up at 2 o'clock.
2 o'clock, we're going deeper than we've gone for a while.
They're having, they're, they're having a cookout or something, so.
It'll be a great one, I would imagine they'll, well, they'll tailgate free and then somebody will do sandwiches at Ballpark. So if you have children, grandchildren, whatever. Watch Allerton Park, it's going to do their Christmas thing and there will be a fabulous representation from.
What was that going to be?
Sign, sign up and bring your children out.
Sign, sign up and bring your children out. You'll have a good time. Thank you all.
No, do not have.
Ryan?
Um, the last blood drive was October 22nd. I don't know when the next one is, but there's always a need. Don't egg.
There's one at the high school when it's coming up.
Is it?
And I just sign samples.
I think they do one, they do one in each semester.
There, there was one. I get the emails from the Red Cross, but the, the other one is, it's like the 23rd or something like that. I think.
November.
Oh, okay.
December.
Oh, December.
December.
I think it's right before.
Yeah, it's the last one.
Give your last drop of blood.
Yeah.
Tom, you got anything? I don't. Brian, do the night.
No, sir.
Okay. Police chief's report, Rob.
If someone has something, I'm not going to be here any longer than we have to.
You're so kind. Andrea appreciates that. Fire chief's report, John.
We had a couple of good trainings last month. We did a good training, which is rather mentioned, but there's a downed firefighter victim. We go in there with a special pack and get them out. We did cardiac training with the heart actor nerve from Carl. It was a really excellent training. We did open house preparation. We had an open house on the 12th. It was well attended. I didn't get to go because my daughter got married that day, so I really had another.
Oh, congrats.
I had to be, yeah, so. But it was, it was well attended, so I appreciate that. We ran 57 calls last month. We're up to 522. We ran 499 last year, which was our all time record. So we're way ahead of our all time record. So that, that's about it for firefighters. So thank you.
Thank you. Terry, you got an administrative report?
A lot.
A lot?
Just kidding. I do want to say some of you may have seen an advertisement for a position at City City Hall Administrative Assistant. Jill Potts has been with the city for 14 years. And Jill has decided she's going to pursue other things and submitted a letter of resignation effective at the end of this year. I think Jill was maybe going to do it sometime next year, but wants to do some other things. Been with the city a long time. I appreciate all that you do, all that you have done, Jill. I wish you nothing but the best and whatever, whatever you, road you go down next. You've been a huge asset to City Hall and.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you so much.
Congratulations on your change.
Yes.
That's Jim.
That's true.
That's our Jim. Are you done?
I'm sorry. Got anything else? Nancy, awfully quiet over there.
Come out to the tailgate party. Starts at 11:00 over at the new building.
Is it done?
What's that?
That building done? Yep.
Yes.
Yeah, that's all I have.
That was $5 million.
I'd entertain a motion.
So move.
Move.
Again. Hi.